Yep.
Okay, good, thanks. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to council on Tuesday, October the 12th. Calling me to order at 4:00 PM. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving weekend. As usual, ask everybody to make sure their vibrating devices aren't vibrate in our silent mode. Any additions or deletions to the agenda today? Hearing none. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Regular media council has circulated amended. Move by.
Counselor Valens.
Counselor Shaker.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. As Counsel DeBouchy notified, he wasn't going to be in.
I haven't gotten any notice here worship. I do believe back from a not of town trip yesterday.
Okay, no worries. No, there's Counsel DeBouchy right there. So the first motion I just marked four individuals. I'll readjust that for the next motion. Counsel DeBouchy signed in. Okay, any disclosure of interest? Hearing none. I do have a motion here that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, September 27th as circulated or amended. And move by.
Counselor Lake.
Okay, got Counsel Lake and second by Counsel Valens. Any arrows or emissions in those minutes? Good afternoon, Counsel DeBouchy.
Good afternoon.
Okay, you're good. Okay, so all in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Right up, we have the C O reports. Well, first off, Counselor, Counselor student to report, Counsel Lake, you identified that you had, you had potential students. Can you give us a quick update on that before we go on?
Yeah, I sure can. Thank you. So the school, obviously, we're still ironing out some of our protocols and normally our student counselors come from student council. Our student council has been slow to get up and running, but I did request students to come forward and we had two excellent candidates, among some others that, you know, in working with the principal, Mr. Wilson, we've agreed would be good representatives to school. So I'm really excited to announce that we have a grade 12 student, Lauren Kavner, who will be one of our student counselors. And our second is Kate Mitchips, who is a grade 11 student this year. Both have been really active in the school community. Both are active in the community in general. So I think they're, they speak well and they speak their mind. So I think they will be a really good fit for, for the council. And I think I'm pretty excited to have them aboard. I haven't sort of connected them with Ms. Lee's yet, but I'm sure we'll, we'll get them up to speed on what they have to do in order to, to attend and what their duties are. And hopefully we'll all be able to meet each other in person. I would say it was nice, the mayor and the C O were able to, and two of the counselors were able to meet Lauren at the flag raising for every child matter. So had a bit of an invitation that we informally, but moving forward, those are our two Kate or and will represent the high school.
Great, thanks. Thanks for that, Counsel Lake. Yeah, it was good. I kind of put them all on the spot when I asked them to come and help raise the flags, but they're, they're motivated somewhat and they did come out and help also thank them for that. Mr. Skorczynski.
Thanks, your worship. So that those, the swearing in ceremonies for those counselors, we follow the exact same protocol we do for our regular members of council will be at the October 25th meeting. So Ms. Lee's will notify those individuals as well as their parents slash guardians. And in the interim, we'll put together a package of orientation for those two individuals to help with their onboarding.
Great, thanks for that. Okay, up next we have a report on, sorry, oh, sorry.
Just one, is, so normally we do that swearing in in person. Do we think that we will be able to do that in person or will it be a virtual swearing in just in terms of notifying those two individuals?
I'll, I'll speak with Ms. Lee's. I think we're, we can make an exception, even if it's just for those two individuals and maybe the mayor. We'll, we'll do that at that meeting. I think that's, that's appropriate in that way, you know, proper photographs, et cetera. We'll use, utilize social distancing within the council chambers.
Great, thanks for that. Okay, report on the COVID-19 proof vaccination requirements for the municipal buildings, call for all members, Mr. Skorczynski, please.
Thanks, your worship. So as council will recall, recall, this is a follow-up report resulting from our last regular meeting of council and a deputation from the Chair of the Marathon Public Library Board. So at its regular meeting on September the 14th, council implemented a proof of vaccination mandate for those 12 years of age and over at the following town-owned facilities, the arena, the pool, LCH Peninsula Golf Course slash the cross-country ski chalet in the winter, the Marathon Public Library and the Marathon Museum. At the regular meeting of council on September, September the 28th, the Chair of the Marathon Public Library Board made a deputation to council requesting the library be removed from this requirement. The Marathon Public Library is housed in a town-owned building and they do not pay, that they do not pay lease for. Council does have the legal authority to implement COVID-related protocols such as proof of vaccination requirements at any town-owned building and by extension, it is applicable to any user group of that facility. And in this case, that would include the Marathon Public Library Board, staff and facility users. So based on the last regular meeting, administration has conducted some additional research. And it should be noted that the use of indoor meeting and event spaces within public libraries does, does require proof of vaccination for all patrons attending the meeting or event with the exception only for the following uses. For a day camp or overnight camp for children, for a provider of, a provider of childcare within the meeting of the Childcare and Early Years Act, for the purpose or provision of social services, for the purpose of delivering or supporting the delivery of court services, for operations by or on behalf of a government, for the purpose of delivering or supporting the delivery of government services. So there is a portion of the library that even under the original mandate from the province of Ontario required proof of vaccination. So administration is ready and willing to assist library staff with proof of vaccination implementation plans as we have done with other user groups to date. Those include minor hockey and figure skating, as well as we're currently working with our seniors club, getting them back into Lakeview Community Hall, as well as our cross-country ski club to get them ready for the upcoming season. So there are no financial implications at this time and your administration presents this report for council's information and further direction.
Well, thank you for that. I have any question from councils? I know we have newly appointed Counsel Zingrau on the board and Counsel DeBouchy serving on the library board. Is there any comments or questions? Counsel Lake?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I guess I would start by saying what I heard kind of loud and clear from the library board was the frustration on the board was that they felt like, you know, they are a separate entity from the town and yet don't feel like they're, they're being treated as such. And, and I want to say to begin with, like, I get that frustration and would absolutely love to see the communication better between the town and the library. I think that's, that's on us as a council and administration. This one issue, however, for me is a health issue. I'm perfectly happy to say we're going to make vaccine mandates for all of our, our town-owned buildings. So I'm happy to do that, but I would say, you know, it's a, we should respect that deputation and give them a really clear communication to, to, you know, let them know this is a decision we made. This is why we've made it. We feel it's in the best interest of the health of the community. We're not, you know, trying to step on the autonomy of the board. We want to promote that autonomy of that board. But in this one issue, certainly that's something that this council, if we vote for it is, has, has voted for and is in favor of. So I just think I'm in favor of, of the motion, but also really want to honor that deputation and clearly communicate our decision to them.
Okay, thanks for that, Counsel Lake. There is no motion in front of us. The direction that we are going to probably follow is the previous meetings, information that was provided and then all our facilities, proof of vaccination. So Counsel Zingrau.
So I have been also doing some research on it. And when I look on the government of Ontario site about the vaccine passports, it's actually sending people to libraries to print their vaccine passports. So to me, to me, that means if you, if you need to be able to be there without being able to show it, you, you shouldn't need to have it to get into the library. That's how I'm reading that. I'm, was also seeing lots of different articles pointing to lots of different libraries that are offering that kind of service for free, for printing and for laminating those passports. Obviously, that would be up to the, up to the library if they, they choose to do that. I was also was trying to find if there are libraries that are requiring the vaccine passport. And from what I could see, I couldn't find any that are. Now, they're not all, like, they don't all show it on their websites. And I didn't go look at every single library in Ontario, but from the ones I could see in our region and in the major cities, none of them are asking for that. So I think doing this would be doing, doing more than we need to. And I would, I would think we should exempt the library from this personally.
So Counsel Zingrau, just a quick response to your comment on the second port, portion of the page that was just presented for information, the purpose of delivering and supporting delivering of government services. So an individual comes to the library, they have every right to go with the exception under the, under the vaccination, proof of vaccination, to go in and get a copy or printout of their vaccination report. That's a service that the library can provide. The, the idea is of going in and spending time in the library is the question that we're, we're debating here now about the services that they can. And Mr. Skorczynski read off the availability and the exemptions within the act. So Counsel DeBouchy.
Yeah, I think what we're missing here is twofold. First off, the people who don't have vaccinations are not going to go to the Service Ontario to get information from a government that they don't trust. So one of the ideas behind the libraries having free access or, or access is that people could get information, reliable information from the library. They can also get the services they need. I think the thing we're missing here, and I stated it last week also, or last meeting, is we never gave the library a chance to implement their own thing, which was in the works before we implemented this policy or this included them in this policy. And the reason why I asked it to be added to the agenda is so that the library, who again is an autonomous board, could develop that thing. And from our indications, from what was going to come through this thing before their protocols, would they would adhere to level three protocols for certain services that they would provide. It still was not free rein for unvaccinated people to come in and peruse and do our clear library, but it was a plan that they were developing as an autonomous board. The big thing, and I think Counsel Lake stressed on it, is we circumvented that authority without giving them due notice because we considered it our building. If that was the case, then the clinic would be required. You know, there are other places that, you know, we do lease out or we have some control over. Again, I'm not asking that the library and as a board member of the library, I would vote against a policy that would allow free access to the library. But I really think we need to let the library develop their own plan because there are people falling through the cracks with either documentation or knowledge. And the, the last place that these people who don't trust the vaccine are going to go to get information is from the Service Ontario or government buildings who are exempt under the COVID vaccine policy. I asked that we let the library develop their own policy within the next couple of weeks, implement it, and then we remove them from it so that we respect their autonomy and we look over their things. You have two counselors on there that will speak, well, will speak on behalf of the wishes as a whole, because I think and I know the library board is not against vaccines. They are not against implementing restrictions on unvaccinated people. But again, we need to provide a service for the people who are falling through the cracks. I mean, we cannot get past that 80% threshold. And from all indications, as I stated last time, it's not the 20% people who just are anti-vaxers. It's people who are falling through the cracks, don't know where to get a vaccination, don't know how to get a vaccination, don't have documentations or health cards to get vaccinations. And it may not be a significant portion of the population, but every one of those people matters. So I think again, I'm going to task the administration to work with the library administration also and come up with a plan so that they can self-govern themselves.
Okay, so, so Counsel DeBouchy, just for clarification, the clinic pays the municipality a lease, they lease the facility office, so they have every right to do what they do under that lease agreement that they have the municipality. Counsel Valens will come back.
One, one sec, I'm going to do a rebuttal on that if I may.
Well, no, there's no need to debate. It's just that you made a comment.
There is, there is.
The clinic pays rent.
No, no, the reason why the library doesn't pay rent is because we remove that from a budget, charge the library $1 or like lease. It doesn't matter. Either way, the, the town is going to fund, have to be a major portion of funder for that library. So if the library or the fair economic lease rate is $100,000, our portion of their budget would be $250,000.
Okay.
You can't use as, as the main example of why they don't pay rent or they, or they don't have autonomy to run their own board.
With Counsel DeBouchy, I'm just trying to clarify a point you made. The library does not pay rent to date. So until we adjust that part of the lease agreement, the clinic does. So there's no, you can't compare the two. So right now, as it stands, the library does not pay rent, the clinic does. So there's not a comparable. Counsel Valens.
I just want to make a comment when we discussed through the delegation last meeting with the Chair of the library. I specifically asked a question regarding any changes or revisions surrounding COVID-19 happening to the library act as we saw happen with the municipal act and the education act throughout COVID. And now we've seen in the past week, the ministry has come out and has made changes to the library where essentially any events or anything ran in the library, you are mandated to be vaccinated. So although you can seek services at the library, you do need to be vaccinated to attend meetings and or events at the location. So I think it's imperative to state that us as council are only acting proactively for the betterment of the community and the safety of the patrons using the services because as of right now, the environment continues to change daily essentially. So new regulations and guidelines are coming out constantly. And we just saw that and we've seen it essentially on exactly where the library now you need to be mandated to be vaccinated in order to attend some of their services. So again, us as the team and as a council are only do the best for the betterment of the community and for the user group of all the establishments that are ran through the town. So that's my sense.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Skorczynski.
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to provide two clarifications. So, you know, it's been mentioned numerous times about an autonomous board. All of our user groups that are incorporated not-for-profit bodies are autonomous boards. Marathon Minor Hockey is an autonomous board that utilizes our facility, as is Marathon Figure Skating, as is the Cross Country Ski Club. So if you're a not-for-profit and you're incorporated, you're an autonomous board utilizing our facility. The library board is no different. They don't own that building and they do not currently have a lease in place. Therefore, they're an autonomous board using one of our facilities. The second is, and I just wanted to expand upon Counselor Valens's comments, which are correct, is, you know, based on the additional research we've done administratively, is there is currently the requirement for full vaccination to utilize some library services. So if it was a planned event, if it was a planned board meeting, any of those types of operations require full vaccination and are not exempted under Ontario's current protocols and guidelines. So it's a much simpler process where, you know, we have at our facilities, which is it's full vaccination, proof of requirement. How you get, how you screen for the other piece, I'm not really sure. Administration will of course take direction from council, but it is administration's view that our facilities should all fall under the same mandate as previously approved by council.
Yep, thank you. And Counsel Zingrau?
So I know there are exceptions to what, you know, what you need a vaccine for in the library, but I think we, we chose a board. We ensured they were skilled, skilled board. We went through interviews with them. And I think we need to put our trust in them that, that they can look at those exemptions and what's needed at the library and make the right decisions for, for the library at, on what, on when those vaccine passports are needed and when they're not.
Yes, thank you very much for that comment. I think Mrs. Skorczynski just nailed that on the head with the report by stating clearly that the library, CEO and staff have every right to allow people to come to the library to utilize services based on the exemptions that were provided by the Ontario government. So we can pass that information back to library boards. We've debated this. I think everybody's of the understanding this is a town-owned facility. How do we deal with it is the question at hand. Do we continue to have vaccines, proof of vaccination required in all town-owned facilities? Or do we, we segregate the library out and allow them to do their own thing? That's the question at hand. But Mr. Skorczynski's got a comment.
Yeah, I just, just to follow up that your worship, you know, it, because there's no lease in place with the Marathon Public Library at the current time, it is the municipality's 100% liability for that building. The Marathon Family Health Team and the utilization of the clinic is a different scenario because we have a lease in place wishing with insurance requirements.
Okay, so I think we, we've debated this quite clearly and we've discussed it in the previous meeting. The requirements of the public library is to make sure that individuals are fully vaccinated. Other than, and I believe that the board chair can go back to the board with our two council reps and discuss the exemptions. And I think the autonomy of that board is to do direct the people coming in for the exemptions that are allowed to come into utilized facilities and services in the library. Mrs. Skorczynski, another comment?
No, sorry, worship.
Okay, thanks.
My hand, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, so with that being said, the information that was provided was to continue on the path that we represented our last council meeting. So I'll ask council and I'll ask for you to speak on, on your choice. So to continue to have the library is incorporated as part of our municipal vax, proof of vaccination, Counsel Lake?
Yes, I support that.
Counsel Zingrau?
No.
Counsel Valens?
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel DeBouchy?
No.
So in this case, I do vote that they fall under the municipal vaccination, proof of vaccination requirements so that will be forwarded on to the library CEO and Chair. And they'll have also a copy of the exemptions under the vaccinations report that was just presented to us by Mrs. Skorczynski. So there's no motion needed. It's just continuation of the information that was provided our last meeting. Up next, we have administration report on multi-year municipal access, accessibility plan. Mr. Skorczynski is going to highlight this.
It's Ms. Lee's, your worship.
Yeah, Ms. Lee, sorry about that.
No worries. So going from the library to the multi-year accessibility plan, we're just full of good ideas today. The purpose of the Accessibility for Ontario's with Disabilities Act 2005, or also known as the AODA, is to improve opportunities for people with disabilities and to provide for their involvement in the identification, removal and prevention of barriers to their full participation. To this end, the AODA mandates that each municipality prepare a multi-year accessibility plan. The municipality's previous plan lapsed prior to COVID and administration took the opportunity to create a new, more streamlined, multi-year plan. This plan was prepared by administration and reviewed with the municipality's accessibility focus group. The plan describes the measures the municipality will take to identify, remove and prevent barriers to persons with disabilities. The plan focuses on municipal facilities and services with a view to improving access for the public and employees of the Corporation of the Town Marathon. The plan focuses on seven commitments with objectives and outcomes identified for each commitment. The commitments are, number one is accessible customer service and programming. Number two is clear and accessible communication. Number three is accessible employment and workplaces. Number four is accessible transportation services. Number five is accessible public spaces. Number six is accessible procurement and number seven is the governance and policies. Once approved, copies of the multi-year plan will be made available for review at the town office and on the town's social media and website. The financial implications are any costs pertaining to the plan will be incorporated into future operating budgets. Our options are to adopt the 20, the 2021 to 2026 accessibility plan as presented or do not approve the plan and direct administration to revise the accessibility plan. Your, your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the 2021 to 2026 accessibility plan be approved as presented with copies of the plan available at the town office and on the town's social media sites and website. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on the multi-year municipal accessibility plan. And for that, a copy of the plan be posted in the municipality's social media and website and also be made available upon request at the town office. Move by.
Counsel Valens.
Counsel DeBouchy.
Yeah, Counsel Valens, second by Counsel DeBouchy. Any questions, comments on that accessibility plan, Counsel DeBouchy?
Uh, yeah, when I was reading over the, the issue there and the transportation services and then it has and systems. I see that and I understand the sidewalk issues and obviously we don't have public transportation, but I see on their trails and it makes me a little concerned about the cost of trying to provide trails, I'll say, or within our community when we say that it'll be easily, or that everyone can easily travel at Marathon. We have a huge project going on in Pebbles Beach. And part of the system or plan was to get access to the beach itself. You know, and I could see if your mobility is limited or you have some issues, but I mean, one of the reasons we couldn't go or we didn't go two stories on the clubhouse design was because of the access, this accessibility and the new build. Will the trail be determined as a new build and will we have to be compliant under the AO accessibility portion of it? Because if it does, that's, it becomes quite difficult if we plan to even extend trails within our community.
Um, I'm not really sure. I wish I knew the answer to that. I, I think the goal of the accessibility plan again is to identify and do the best we can within reason to allow everybody access to the same services that, that all, all residents have access to.
Yeah, Mrs. Skorczynski has a comment too on that.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I just wanted to, to answer Counsel DeBouchy's question regarding Pebble Beach because it's a good example of us utilizing the lens of an accessibility plan when we look at projects. So it's, it's certainly not cost feasible to think that, you know, we could build every single project to a fully AODA accessible standard. But a good example where we're incorporating it is in our Pebble Beach development whereby, you know, we're going to, you know, not necessarily be able to build a wheelchair ramp down to the beach area. But we are going to use things like grade and slope that are recommended through AODA to build a trail to make mobility easier to get down to the beach. So the plan doesn't just serve as, you know, you know, buildings, but we also use it from the perspective of when we look at new builds and new designs to make sure we're incorporating those thought concepts, you know, into those designs when we look at them and ultimately tender them.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick follow-up on it as well. Just similar to the, the committee looking at the boat launch area, Cummings Beach accessibility, the hunting, $100,000 funding we just received. Exactly that very comment that we're looking at some sort of sloping that's more accessible for the general public, not necessarily for somebody in a wheelchair to get down to the footbridge to get over the waterway going into the rock corridor for hiking. So it's about accessibility, but yes, it's not going to be the 100% barrier-free or accessible for all residents in Marathon completely. And that, you know, as well as most of us in the community will be very inappropriate to try to fund those kind of projects to have accessibility other than literally putting down elevators to the main area, but then you get down there and you can't do nothing because it's a, it's a, it's a rock beach. So no different there or in Cummings or good examples, current code, everybody sent an opportunity to walk there. The municipality made it a nice gradual slope down to the picnic table. So the accessibility, even somebody in a wheelchair or a walker can get down there, but that's as far as they can go. They can't go down to the beach or beyond to the, the picnic table hill trail through the Group of Seven historic, the Cross Canada Trail, just too rugged. So Counsel DeBouchy?
Yeah, just to follow up. I just wanted to make sure because I mean, we develop policies and plans for it, but I just wanted to make sure that the public and the rest of the council was aware that you're right. There's, are some cost barriers that we just cannot fathom. I know when the act came out early in in our tenure, we realized that no community will become fully accessible even within the timeline. And that's actually passed because there are just too many old buildings and old things to do. And the new buildings and new builds just could not never incorporate. We, but I think it's important. We have a document. We, but I think it's important. We have a document like that to to show that as. You know, the CEO stressed that we do look at those as as part of our factors. And I think if we move forward with the. Uh, active living center, I think I think we've looked at that with that same lens and I'm happy that we are or I'm happy to support this document.
Good, thank you. Councillor Lake.
Uh, yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, I just, I think in terms again of of communication with our our community. I just wonder, I remember when Steve Henderson was on council, uh, he often brought the lens of someone who was in a wheelchair. Uh, talking about curbs and builds and and places where, I mean, I I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not disabled in a way that I experienced the world like that. So. Is are there people in our community that as we build Pebble Beach, and I think of that as a as a great new build, uh, that we can contact and and sort of try to. You know, make some of those cost effective decisions that make things as accessible as possible. I just think there's some. Uh, folks out there who experience the world differently than than certainly I do. Uh, and just wonder if there's a, you know, a group or a person or or somebody who can sort of, uh, we can tap into that resource locally.
Thanks for that. And I think that's a good, good segue to ask maybe Miss Lee's or. Administration to put a feeler out there through our community website or local paper. Uh, radio to see if somebody is interested, not so much, you know, sitting on a committee, but just giving advice from their point of view, like Mr. Henderson did. Uh, except but also when we went down to Cummings Beach a couple of weeks back, there was an individual that was in a motorized wheelchair. That was literally up on the rocks at the boat launch area, enjoying the sunset. So it is accessible. It just, you know, we're not going to be going off into the trail systems and going from Pebble Beach or Cummings Beach to Carden Cove along the rocks. Accessibility, but there are are means we can make it more accessible for for everybody in our community. So. Uh, we can do that administration, just kind of may put a feeler out there, see if somebody who could. Who's coming from that angle to give us advice on how they see things as best as we can adopt. Is that what you're looking for, councillor Lake?
Uh, yeah, uh, as is practical, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, so with that being said, I'll call a question all in favor of this uh, report. And also one other thing before we call it, before we vote. Uh, you know, the 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 AODA is is an act that we should also be up to speed on. For for our own benefit of the educational aspect of it. So maybe we some we can do a little follow up. Ten minute, you know, session, you know, once or twice a year, where we are with the plan and how things moving forward.
Actually, that's part of the the plan is the communication part.
Right, okay, with with council too.
You're correct, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Up next, we have the report on twenty two municipal elections. Miss Lee's, please.
Uh, in accordance with Ontario's Municipal Elections Act two thousand and one, as amended with Bill one eighty one, the act. The next municipal school board election will be held on Monday, October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two. The clerk as the returning officer is responsible for for preparing and conducting local elections under the act. And to ensure that all members of the electorate are given every opportunity to vote and that the voting process is as accessible, transparent and accountable as possible. Section forty two of the Ontario Elections Act. States that council shall pass bylaws authorizing the use of alternative voting methods. Bylaws must be passed on or before May first of the election year, which is two thousand and twenty two. In December of two thousand and twenty, administration brought a report outlining the different voting options available. Administration was directed to research an electronic voting option and report back outlining financial implications. Marketing and communication for electronic voting for the two thousand and twenty two municipal school board election. The financial implications will be will be discussed below. As for the marketing and communication, additional funds will be placed in the two thousand and twenty two budget for educational newspaper and radio ads. The use of social media will be used heavily during two thousand and twenty two educating electors. On using vote internet voting, asking electors if they are on the voters list and to ensure their information on the list is correct. It is very important that electors ensure their information is correct. Because that information is used in concert with a PIN to access their ballot. The company that is being recommended to conduct the two thousand and twenty two elections is Sidle. Administration has been in communication with Sidle to discuss and review their proposal, scope of work and the costing. Their proposal is available to members of council, but due to proprietary items in the proposal, it cannot be made available to the public. Administration is recommending this company for several reasons, which include, but not limited to. True end to end audibility and verification, real time voting, dual language options. And dual validation and verification at the end of the vote. A separate report and bylaw will be presented early in the new year, setting the date and times for the advanced voting, which is section forty three of the act. Financial implications. In two thousand and eighteen, the municipality spent roughly fifteen thousand dollars on a traditional in-person. Paper ballot manual account election. The price quoted from Sidle Internet was thirteen five, sorry, thirteen thousand five hundred, which is all in taxes included. This does not include any increases from Canada Post from the date the contract is signed to election day. Or for an optional pre notification letter that can be sent to residents prior to the official notice. That notice will contain their PIN. So options A authorize administration to enter into a contract with Sidle to conduct the two thousand and twenty two municipal and school board election via internet voting. And to approve by law number twelve twenty, or sorry, tw- twenty twelve, which authorizes the alternate voted method. Or option B, which is do not approve the ultimate voted method and direct administration to conduct the two thousand and twenty two municipal. And school board election in a traditional in-person paper ballot manual account method. Your recommendation is your administration recommends option A. With administration being authorized to enter into a contract with Sidle to conduct the two thousand and twenty two municipal and school board election. Via internet voting and to approve by law number twenty twelve, authorizing the alternative voting method.
Great, thank you for that report. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attachment report and recommendation in two thousand and twenty two municipal election electronic voting. And that administration is hereby authorized to conduct. The two thousand and twenty two municipal and school board elections via alternative voting, specifically internet voting. And further that the administration is authorized to enter into a contract with Sidle, Canada, to conduct the two thousand and twenty two municipal and school board elections. With the appropriate bylaw being adopted later in this meeting. Move by.
Councillor.
Okay, so I've got a councillor Jingra and councillor Dubushi. Questions or councillor Valance?
Yeah, I think the online voting method really allows for our younger voters who are away at post-secondary studies to be able to still participate in having a voice. In voting. We talked about how um, this is now kind of a new method over, will this supersede the traditional method? Uh, Miss Lee's, or will there also be uh, an in-person traditional type voting happening in the community al- along with. The online internet um, voting system.
No, so it will be um, internet voting. But what we will offer is um, there'll be a poll here at the town office. Where somebody has issue or doesn't have internet or is not. Certain on how to vote, they can come into the town office and we'll walk them through the process and they can vote here. Um, I'm also going to be, uh, I'll be going to the manor to assist them in voting. I'll be going to the long term um, housing in the hospital to assist them. And I will be, we will be going down to the seniors home to set up like a day or two, just to to walk them through the process as well.
Good, thank you. Uh, councillor Jingra.
Um, so I have two, two questions. Um. Their proposal talked about all the different aspects that they'll be taking, undertaking. So are they doing the public education on how this will work or would that be up to the municipality? And then the second question, is there any? Any other foreseen costs with the internet voting? So extra, any staffing, extra staffing or anything like that, or this public education? We need to do that on our end.
So the public um, education, they're going to assist us with the um, the message. But it will be up to the municipality to uh, put the message out. Uh, their their main focus is to ensure that the election is run. Uh, that the ballots are put in and counted and like they're they're the internet voting part of it. We're doing like the education and um, all the other stuff. That happens with, they're they're the only other staff will be equal if you need. So we won't have additional staff, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Lake.
Sorry, thank you, worship. Um, so uh, I I really dislike internet voting. Uh, personally, I think there's something about. Uh, you know, going to the rec hall or there was a legion this year and there's something about going to that public square. And casting your vote as a community. So I'm, I've always uh. Thought that was important and I always kind of liked that it's a little bit inconvenient that uh. You know, voting is your civic duty and you actually have to do something. I I dislike the idea of hitting a like button. Um, I think we do too much of that. I think uh, there's something about that uh, going to a public square uh, to do it. Uh, and yet I understand we're in a pandemic, uh, and that is superseded. So. You know what? I I would support that move because of the health situation we're in. I don't think I would. Support it if we was not for the pandemic. I really, really, really do feel um, that voting is. A a public act, uh, not obviously it's a private vote, but that you should have to go out into your community to do it. So. Uh, given that it's a pandemic, I support it. I'm very happy to hear there will be. For people who don't want to do it online like myself, I can still go somewhere to vote. Um, but given the health situation uh, that we find ourselves in, that just like the library debate. Uh, I think there are some things that are more important than than my beliefs. I think public health is important to ensure. So I would support it in this particular election.
Thank you for that, councillor Dubushi.
Yeah, I've been a supporter for the last three elections on alternative voting methods other than pen and paper. I think we are, sorry, I think the generations, I I might be, obviously, I'm not the last generation because. Councillor Lake feels strongly about going to the paper polls, but I think the new generation. Does their life on the internet and and through social media. So I think it's important that we keep up with the times. I think voter engagement, we've always talked about voter engagement and how do we do it? I think making it easier is not a bad thing. I think making it more accessible. Uh, my only, my concern again, and and I need to make sure that it's, you know, we'll have enough stations or. Even if we have to add additional costs that we have extra stations at the town hall. Or advanced polls where they can, they use um, the town facilities or again, public spaces and I'll I'll. Encourage the library to make themselves available for electronic voting as part of a board member on them. But I think we need to make sure that people, not all, not all people are as lucky as most of us are all, probably all of us. You know, in administration and council who have access readily access to one tablet or two or your phone or or home computer system. So. I I'm, I will support this because I've always supported the idea, but I also am not opposed to adding extra costs. To make sure we have enough stations for people who aren't comfortable with voting, don't have access to the electronics necessary to vote. So if that includes a couple of advanced polls at the town hall or making. You know, the library accessible or whatever it may be so that they can vote. Um. I I will also support the extra cost needed to staff and to provide those uh. The, I guess, the hardware mostly. So that's my opinion on that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Valance.
I just want to say I totally agree with councillor Lake. He hit it right on on the head, I feel like, when he talks about keeping the public safe. And especially when we talk about the more mature demographic, that's where my worry was is the PD and the education piece. With the senior groups within the community and making sure they feel comfortable with the process. With that being said, this is only for the next municipal election. Upon the completion of that, we're going to be having this discussion or council, whoever council will be. Will then be having that discussion for the next, next, next election. And this is only this, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think we've we've nailed this one down pretty good. We've talked about in the past, councillor Dubushi makes note of this has been ongoing for three or so elections discussion. We've been around for a long time by the sounds of it. So. Uh, the reality is that it is going to open up the doors for a lot more people to vote and we'd be foolish to think that. Our seniors in our community do not use social media. They have social media in their hand, just like the rest of us. Any given time of the day, you look at a senior, they're they're on the internet, uh, on their phone or on their device. So they're they're tuned in. And I think we'll have a bigger and better turnout and I think it's it's worth our our. Our opportunity now to experience the internet voting with the accessibility at the town hall for. People to drop in and vote in person or get directions if they're not uh, have the devices or the internet at home. So. Uh, we'll call the question uh, that's been provided in regards to the company. Uh, that uh, will be providing the internet services, uh, not adding on any other locations. I believe we're going to go with this motion. For the one internet voting provider as well as a access at the town hall through the clerk's deputy clerk's office. Okay, with the mover and seconders permission, I'll call a question all in favor.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, up next, uh. The uh, well-being plan, Mr. Skrzynski, where are we with that community safety and well-being plan?
Also, Miss Lee's leaving that back.
Yeah, sorry.
I've spoken more than I have all year.
That's okay.
Thank you, your worship. Um, this community safety and well-being plan update is being um, provided by myself and Andrea Gochay. Who are two of the Marathon members of the joint committee. In March of two thousand and eighteen, the Ontario government passed Bill one seventy five. The Safer Ontario Act, which requires all municipalities in Ontario to prepare and adopt a community safety and well-being plan. By January first, two thousand and twenty one. Due to the COVID pandemic, the Ontario government extended the deadline to July first, two thousand and twenty one. Yes, we have missed the deadline. Administration provided an initial update in May of this year and following that update, administration has been working with the townships of Manitowoc, Scriber and Terrace Bay. In preparing a joint community safety, well-being plan. We're just going to call it the plan from here. An RFP was sent out by invite to a number of companies over the summer and three responses were received before the deadline date of August thirteenth. M N P, which is from Winnipeg, Fire Dog from Thunder Bay and ISN from Sault Ste. Marie, all submitted bids before the the deadline. Upon review of the proposal, the group chose the proposal from ISN. ISN has assigned a number, has assisted a number of municipalities with their plans. And has extensive experience and knowledge of preparing these plans. We had, as as a group, we had our first meeting with ISN on October first to review the process moving forward. The first step was to create a steering committee and that steering committee will consist of Nathan Diaz from Nipigon. Sorry, from Scriber, John Hall and Jen Jeffrey from Terrace Bay. Florence McLean and Jolene Keough from Manitowoc and Andrea and myself from Marathon. Our focus of the steering committee is to ensure that the process is moving forward. To provide the contact information needed by the consultant for community groups and to provide general assistance when needed. The next step is to work with the consultant to to create an implementation committee. Which will consist of individuals from different local social services agencies from each individual municipality. So pretty much creating four separate implementation committees. Once these committees are up and running, the consultant will work on getting the stats needed for the plan and will host a number of engagement sessions with a variety of local and district. Social service agencies. These include, but not limited to, health and mental health, education, community and social services. Community and social services to youth and children, custodial services for youth and children and the local detachment commander. About halfway through the process, an engagement session will be held with each municipal council to update them on the process. An open meeting with all residents at large will also be held as well as a general municipal survey seeking input. All engagement sessions will be done virtually. The timeframe ISN has provided is three months after the first engagement session. So we are aiming for the final report to be completed in early two thousand and twenty two. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. So a couple of quick questions. I don't see any other hands up right now. So working with the other communities, uh, putting this together, any First Nations involvement in the community safety plan?
That will be um, in the consultant.
Consulting part of it, okay, so information gathering. Cost, what was the budgeted amount that you allowed for this process to take place? You know, I know, I understand there's multiple municipalities.
Yeah, we are all putting in ten thousand, so a total of forty.
Okay, so forty grand and we're going to have consultation with our neighbors. Because at the end of the day, the community safety plan has got to be something that's a document that we can work with. It doesn't have to, like you, you've looked at, you've seen Canora's and Thunder Bay's and you know, some, one's really big and one's really straightforward. And I think the straightforward approach is what we need to go after and uh, having our services being provided and what we provide the community. For the services and outreaches for all. provided, and what we provide the community for the services and outreach is for all our members and our region. So that's key, and working with the community safety plan is just make it simple, not something that's complicated document that we can't implement in any part of our community.
That's the plan.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody, sorry, anybody else? Okay, thank you for the information. I do have a motion under the bylaws, the bylaw number twenty-twelve being a bylaw to authorize the internet voting for two thousand twenty-two municipal and school board elections, and entering to a services contract with Cydel Canada to provide an alternative voting services to be read a first, second, and third time, and finally passes twelfth day of October, two thousand twenty-one. Move by.
Counselor Valance?
Counselor Jingra.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of that bylaw? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor? Oh, wait, Mr. Skorchinsky, sorry.
Sorry, worship, go ahead and call the question, it's not related to the.
Okay, yeah, call a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that bylaws passed, thank you very much. And I have one other report, Mrs. Skorchinsky, you have something?
Oh, sorry, you just, you just skipped the order in the agenda, your report was twelve, and that was thirteen, I just wanted to make.
I know, my sheet's blank on the backside, so that's why I didn't, I didn't see it.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't miss yourself.
No, I got that down to bottom here. So NOMA, we had a great session last week, we had our strategic plan, we had Pat Venini, who was the previous executive director of AMO, come up and do a full day, was very, very well, well-run, and we did a lot of head-storming and raining, and out of that, I asked NOMA, and I asked our board members to provide members of council an update on who NOMA is and what NOMA does, because, believe it or not, even though the municipalities are all represented through their initial, their, each and every board throughout the, the NOMA district, that a lot of people do not know what NOMA does and how NOMA represents them. So we are going to now send out reports to the CAOs or clerks in the municipalities of thirty-seven municipalities under the NOMA mandate, and we're going to give you information. You know I share all the stuff I sit on NOMA with, but a lot of members don't bring that information back either from their association or their, their board membership, which is, is kind of frustrating, because the idea to sit on NOMA is to have the understanding of their business brought back to the councils that support them. So who is NOMA? NOMA is Northwestern Municipal Association, as we all know. It represents Canora District Municipal Association, the Rainy River District Municipal Association, the Thunder Bay District Municipal Association, and also the City of Thunder Bay. I should have asked a quiz question, because probably that's where a lot of people get stumbled up, even the City of Thunder Bay's got its own representation on the board. It represents thirty-seven municipalities, and it, it goes from basically Manitowage right to the Manitowag border. It's an essential unified voice is heard by the orders of government to ensure that the province is looking and making the changes that would affect Northwestern Ontario municipalities, and specifically Northwestern Ontario throughout the whole area that we bring to their attention on a regular basis through Roma and AMO conferences, as well as meetings through the AMO board, and three of us, Wendy Landry, the mayor of Shunia, myself, Rick Dumas, Mayor of Town and Marathon, and Fred Mota of the Red Lake, the Canora District, sit on your executive for NOMA, and go to AMO meetings in Toronto, and the president has the opportunity to sit in the member and understanding table with the premier and members of his cabinet, and so that's a great opportunity to bring our voice on a regular basis as well. So in the October seventh board meeting, we had some summary of, of things, that's what it's all about, just to summarize what we have done, and I know I give the reports, but I know that a lot of members don't give those reports, so now everybody's going to be on the same page, and it's going to be sent to the clerks, and we've asked for that to be put on the agenda of each municipal council, so that they get a quick overview of what's happening with NOMA. So NOMA updated their board, we had a couple of vacancies due to people putting their name forward for the provincial election coming up. Under our constitution, if you put your name for an election and you, you declare, you must vacate your seat of NOMA. So we had two vacancies, and we filled in with Mark Fuglumini from Red Rock, CAO as administrative level, and Jim Vezina O'Connor filled another seat that was vacated. The board discussed the Ontario Northline Transportation Commission, few concerns regarding the bus scheduling, as you know, bus stops in Marathon going west, three o'clock in the morning, not appropriate. The Ontario government funds Ontario Northline substantially, we want to make sure that they're, they hear our voice. Determined whether or not we have engaged in regarding Ontario optometrist, there was a resolution brought forward from the Western communities, that we said no, because we don't think it's our role to get involved in the private business. NOMA also discussed the bear issues experienced in Northwestern Ontario this year, we've had quite a few incidents in our, in our community, so has many others, and how do we deal with that, again, with the Bear Wise program, the spring bear hunt? So that's going to get brack on the radar with the government, and you know, we've all experienced that in Marathon, specifically, we have many, many debates and fights with the Ontario government under liberal leadership about the bear impacts and the cost of transportation, the agreements we had, we had contracts to relocate bears. We've done a lot, and yet now it's all gone back onto the province with one bear tech out of Nipigon to relocate bears or discharge bears within a community based on a safety aspect. We also have, of course, our OPP that does that. NOMA also discussed the implementing of the new onboarding strategy, strategy for members. So we're going to now have a, a policy put in place that any new members come on, they have to go through a learning, a, a session with the executive director, and maybe the president or vice, or somebody like myself, who's been a law member, a serving member of NOMA, to give them some, some experience of what NOMA's all about, and how they can get up to speed quickly on NOMA's role. NOMA also discussed the, the twenty-two AGM conference, it's going to take place in Fort Frances, and it was determined that the conference will be held in person on the twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth of April, two thousand twenty-two. We took in consideration a forest approach NOMA, discussed the participation in the billboard campaign to talk about the, the impact of forestry in our communities, so we're going to assist with the, the, the forest implementation and strategic plan on advertising and promoting of forestry. NOMA participated as well as the, through the AMO delegations, with the conservative liberal and NDP governments, and participate in joint meeting with Phenom and NASDA on the mental health and addictions and homelessness within our communities in Northwestern Ontario. The executive director also attended the following meetings and webinars, and there was many of them, so I won't identify them all, but that all comes back to us as, as things that have been presented or talked about. Then, of course, each one of the municipal leagues gave an overview of their associations, and then the meeting was then adjourned, and we then had, well, before adjournment, we had the Northwestern Ontario, Northern, the Nuclear Waste Management Association do a great presentation on the transportation and, and location, and where they are now with the last two locations. So this will come to council and Marathon, as well as every other municipal council in the NOMA district thirty-seven, and we've asked all the clerks to put it on their agendas as just like our agenda, so under item number seven or eight, it could be NOMA update, and that will come as a regular piece, and it'll be as part of the agenda, and it'll take a couple of minutes for each one of the mayors to highlight what NOMA's up to, whether or not even been to the NOMA board, board meeting, or they're on the association meetings, because each member, like, for example, Thunder Bay District Municipal League, every municipality is represented there. I bring that report back to the municipal league, and they don't bring it back to the municipality, so it just, it doesn't go nowhere. So when members of municipalities are saying, what's going on with NOMA, now you know. And so that's just more information and more awareness of NOMA and their, and what we try to do, because we do a lot, and a lot of it doesn't get recognized, I don't believe, within the districts. Any questions? Hearing none? Good. So we had, sorry, Counselor Lake?
Try, just one question, the, the thing that always excited me about NOMA was when they developed the Policy Institute, just because it's so hard, like, we all say we want, you know, policy based on northern needs, but that was actually an institute that was doing the research and giving good information to the government. Are we still running the Policy Institute, the Northern Institute, out of NOMA, or is that a thing that's?
No, NOMA basically was an advocate to get the funding to supply the budgetary items for the Northern Ontario Policy Institute. It's, it's its own entity, it has a director and a board, and they provide policy through North, Northwestern Ontario, Northeastern Ontario, for the Government of Ontario, so, and Charles Sitwell is the, the executive director of the Policy Institute, and they do write good policy. I can have, I admit it, sometimes I'm frustrated, because I, I thought originally when we, when we lobbied the government for the funding, it was going to be able to create policy specifically for Northwestern Ontario, and that the Government of Ontario would recognize that we are different, and the policy that we implement in Northwestern Ontario is not necessarily the policy that needs to be implemented in Southwestern Ontario, or Southern Ontario, Eastern Ontario, you know, or, or Northeastern Ontario. So it didn't quite work out that way, but they do a good job in writing policy. They're, they're a policy writer. George, George Macy was also a wonderful policy writer, so you understand both policy, it's a wonderful thing, but I'll leave it there. I need to move her a second to adjourn at the hour of four fifty-nine PM.
Counselor.
So moved.
Counselor Valance, Counselor Dubushi, thank you very much, all, and have a good night.
Thank you, have a good week, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.